Good evening, everybody. I'd like to open the meeting with our statement in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:4-6, PL 1975, C231-S1 amended 2006, C70-S2. The Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new coaster on January 4th, 2019 via email. Copies of the notice have also been placed at the administrative building, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 4th, 2019. Asbury Park's mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society." Could we all rise for the pledge of allegiance? Take a roll call. Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lattaraca, Ms. Lizinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Etienne, Ms. Abes Anderson. At this time, we'd like to open the floor to any conversation, any questions or concerns regarding the organization meeting, any items on the organization agenda, if there's any discussion regarding the meeting dates that people would like to put forth, or any questions regarding our upcoming town hall meeting, which I believe is next week, the ninth?
The ninth.
The ninth, at Trinity Church?
Trinity Church at 7:00 PM.
At the gym slash meeting room.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Madam President, can I start it off? Okay. So, regarding the, I guess the more immediate thing is the town hall meeting that we're going to have next week, and we have a flyer that is going to get blasted out. We've already gotten some interest from a few homeowners and property owners that want to know more about S2 and are, I mean rightly concerned about what it means for our district. So, we just spoke before about what the town hall is going to be about, and what we've decided was that these town halls should be focused on a specific issue or like one specific theme, that way we can concentrate on just that, and it's not just, you know, kind of like an open, you know, ask me anything type thing. And so, town hall is going to be about S2. It's going to be more of a conversation where we're going to explain and kind of go through what S2 means for the district, and hopefully dispel any rumors or any kind of notions that are false notions about what this legislation means to the district. I think a lot of people, the only thing they hear is, "My taxes are going to go up, and I don't know what to do." Right. So, with that, there's a flyer that says what it means for Asbury Park residents and what it means for Asbury Park schools. This could be a really great opportunity to explain what our vision is. Again, I hesitate to call it a plan, but to talk about what the school board's vision is to consolidate schools, to, as our superintendent said, to right-size the schools to where it should be, and what we're doing to try and cut costs. But it's also an opportunity for residents to ask us questions, because, you know, with different press and editorials out there saying we should regionalize, or, you know, we go to a homeowners association meeting and people are saying that we should close down all the schools, which, you know, seems like they always want to try to say. We can kind of illuminate the conversation with real facts and numbers. So, I'll open it up to discussion with everyone else about what you feel should be a part of the discussion as well.
I think we should tell, okay.
You might please.
Okay. I think we need to show them how much has changed in the schools over the last number of years, because they get a lot of misinformation and old information, so they don't know how well our students are doing, and what has been accomplished, and what's going on in the schools. And if, according to the number of people that are there, it might be a good time to tell them what these kids are accomplishing, the debate teams, the college activities that they're doing, and the college credits that they're getting while they're here, and that what we see is a difference in the behave, I'll say behaviors, but the attitudes and behaviors of our students that have changed over the last five or six years, seven years, you know? Because I think there's so much misinformation going on that they don't understand the difference. And I personally don't think that we should combine the schools, because our kids need the extra support that they're getting here, and the understanding why throw them into another school. That really doesn't want them, you know?
Well, yeah, in terms of regionalization, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because that's something that the Tri-City News has now done two editorials about. So, again-
And he's here so often to see what we're doing.
What's that?
He comes so often to see what's going on.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, it's really a matter of saying, "Okay, what would that look like?" Okay, and walk people through the steps, and to show them that it's not, you know, it may not be the best thing to advocate for, you know? So, yeah. And also, it's an example, or it's an opportunity, as all these different kinds of meetings are, to not only show outreach, but also, like you said, kind of show where progress is being made, right?
Right.
And show that, you know, enrollment at the high school is going up, and to inform a lot of these people who don't have kids in the school district that, you know, we have the Dream Academy, and all those wonderful things that we promote. So, a lot of times, we think that we're in this little bubble, but a lot of times, that's the first time that people are hearing about it.
Yeah.
Like, I even noticed during the election, we, you know, people would go to different candidate forums, and they would, they'd be like, "Really? We have that? We have a Dream Academy?" Right? And it was like, "Yeah, where have you been?" So, yeah, I mean, I think it's a real opportunity to push that narrative as well, like, where is all this money going?
I think that would be a very important part of it, so that they understand why, you know, consolidating isn't really a good idea.
Joe, um, do we have, is there going to be some type of bullet points or outline or something that we, for us to guide, like, what we're going to talk, what we're going to, you know, keep points that we're going to put up, instead of sitting here talking about it? It's always good to have something, and that way we can also give it to the public, like, this is what we're focusing on today, these are the points we're going to try to stress, and that gives us a little bit of heads up of what we're going to talk about.
Yeah.
You know, who's here, who's going to be there for the administration? Anybody? I'm just curious, you know, because they always go-
So, Sasha, you said you were going to be there, right?
Yes. I'll be present, and I'm going to talk to a couple of members from the team. As I listen to what you're talking about, in terms of what you want to communicate, I think to Carol, Ms. Jones's point, what might be a wonderful addition is just unpacking a little bit more for the audience, what we talked about in our last board meeting around the guidance, what our guidance department has been doing, and the programs specifically, as you shared, at the high school, but not just programs in isolation, the impact that those programs have had, and what it means in terms of opportunities for our children.
I know we've said that, you know, our elementary schools are decreasing, and I think that has a lot to do with the charter schools, but the big focus is our middle school and our high school, I don't remember having that many students, I've been here over 20 years, having over like 450 students in high school. I mean, usually, if you have 300, that was exceptional, now we have almost 500. I think that needs to be stressed, that we're keeping our kids in school, you know, as far as the high school level, because we're offering them more, like, you might be paying as much money per student, but this is what we're getting from our students, and this is the impact that they're having on our city, on our economy, and everything, you know, in this whole community that we live in. We need to stress that, because I know people want to hear that too, you know, because they always ask us, "What are we doing for our kids?"
To your point, Ms. Breach, I will also say that I do think it is definitely an important point to make, that the taxpayers are in cases where our students are not going to college, because some of them, going to college is not a reality. We're able to put an industry-valued credential in their hands, so that when they graduate, they can go right into the workforce. And I agree, we can message that out and use that as an opportunity to talk some more about what that looks like, and what that translates into.
Do you have any idea what it would cost per student to consolidate with Ocean, which is seems to be something people are thinking about? To see how much it would cost us to do that, per student, in relationship to what we're getting here?
I don't have any hard information regarding that, and I would also say that there would be conversations that would need to occur prior to even coming up with a hard number to even make that, to even enter that into a discussion.
Yeah.
There's a lot of groundwork that would have to be laid, and conversations had and agreements with those two entities before we could even really entertain something like that.
Yeah.
Also, remember that people, that what a lot of those articles say is, well, it's the regionalization of not just Ocean and Asbury, but also Neptune. So, it's actually like three different moving parts that they, they're saying that we should merge together.
And Ocean is going to agree to this?
Well, here's the, the other part of this is not just that, yes, these three, like, moving parts have to agree to it, it's not even our choice, it would be something that's mandated, forced upon us by the state, right? Am I correct with that?
I think you still would have to have, each municipality would have to-
Have to ratify it.
They have to ratify it, and, yeah.
I think-
And that's in contrast to the state view of consolidating K to 12, not regionalization of K to 12 they've been talking about, so.
The current plan of consolidation doesn't look like putting our kids on a bus and sending them to a school. It's basically curriculum alignment right now. That's what they're, that's what they're pushing out there. They're not, the kids are not physically leaving their town and going somewhere else. It's basically curriculum alignment. And it's for the sending districts to, because they were having an issue where you had four towns, the extended districts, and then the receiving district is having kids at different levels coming in at high school, and then they're spending their freshman and sophomore years trying to catch some of these kids up, and some of these kids have to slow down, so that was difficult. So, it's curriculum alignment in those younger grades, so that when they come in, they come in prepared.
And I recall, the state monitor had spoke to us, and I believe she said that there's a, there's a study that would have to take place, which is costly, and all districts would have to agree, and then if one pulled out, you know, you still would have to go back to the table, and that is a process, it's not something that's going to happen overnight.
I don't think people realize that we're not going to save a lot of money, we do that, it's going to cost, it's going to cost a lot of money to send students out of the city, it's ridiculous, you know, I mean-
Well, even if, even if it's not about physically sending them, like Sheila said, it's like, if it's just curriculum alignment, then you're still going to have the same properties, you're going to still have the same, like, physical costs if you're not consolidating, you know what I mean? So, it's, if it's just curriculum-based, then I don't see the cost-effectiveness of it, and I think a lot of this advocacy for regionalization is just misinformed, so. But again, the great thing about this, these town halls, and taking the show on the road like this, will be to shed light on what's the real information, and not just, you know, throwing ideas out there.
I know they were petitioning for, they were petitioning the state to subsidize some of those studies, but that's if you were interested, and you have to have the other participating parties interested too, before you can even think about getting the money to do the study. And there was something else with property, like, your property would have to be equal to the property of the district you're trying to combine with. So, we find ourselves spending more money to kind of be where we need to be.
You have to remember, when they do that, even the sending districts have to approve it too. It's not just Ocean Township School, Asbury Park School, and Neptune, it's all the little itty-bitty towns that are sending to those three districts, so it's like a-
And it's not just the, it's not just the boards that have to agree, it's the municipalities, and then perhaps there may be the need for special legislation involved, so it's a, it's quite an undertaking.
So, I think that that, if, when, if that question of regionalization comes up, that we should have information that we can share with them, so that they have a full understanding as to what all would take place.
Joe, are you going to take care of the, are you and Sheila taking care of the, I'm not sure as far as the-
That's what I was going to, so that's what I was going to suggest, if, what we could do, Sheila, is let's get together in the next couple days, if you're free, and we just go over what the bullet points are. I'll type them all up, and make sure that everybody gets it, you know, by the beginning of next week, so we can study it, and, right, if you see something-
People backwards, you know?
I can help with, I can help with that.
Yeah. I mean, the three of us can get together somewhere and just kind of put together what the bullet points will be that we want to, even if it's just an agenda, you know what I mean? Like, we put an agenda saying, you know, this is what S2 is about, how it affects residents, how it affects schools, and then we talk about possible solutions, regionalization, and then give all the pros and cons to regionalization, you know?
As far as we know.
As far as we know. And then what, like, some of the more popular, like, suggestions are out there, and kind of maybe go through that, and then at the very end, say, "Look, but this is what we are doing." You know, we're consolidating our own schools, so we're right-sizing the, you know, the amount of students, you know, and so that way we'll be able to spin off a lot of these properties. And, well, not spin-off, but like, I'm sorry, I didn't use the wrong, the wrong words, like, the whole consolidation, like, closing down the schools and consolidating the students and stuff like that.
So, basically, you're going to be talking about the superintendent's plan?
Vision.
Our vision, excuse me, our vision.
Yeah, for me, it's, and I could, you could argue, you know, contrary to it, but I think it's a plan when we start getting the actual numbers, that, like, when people say, you know, how much money we're going to actually save and all that, then it becomes a plan. Right now, it's just a hard vision of, like, a solid vision of where we want to take the schools, so.
I also think that we should address how far the kids have come in the last years, and how so much of the old information is being put out there, and it's incorrect, and that we really need to let them know how many kids are going to college, how they're, well, they're doing, and how they've come up in their reading skills and their math skills, and all the positive stuff that we have accomplished over the last years, and the changes, because so much stuff goes out there that is 20 years old, you know? So, we have to make sure people understand that that is not the way it is now, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's-
I just think that's real important.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that this is our opportunity to start the PR campaign, start out with, here's where we are right now, and some positives in the first five or 10 minutes. The other category, I think, I'd like, before we get to S2, don't forget who we're talking to, I think we have to channel our best Jeff Hastings and talk about the budget in terms of what it consists of, where the money comes from. We have the grant money, we have money from, from the state, we have money from the residents, and that, as we talk about, people don't know charter schools, just without taking an opinion as a board on charter schools. Charter schools are publicly funded.
Nobody knows it comes out of our budget.
And that's 10 million, so, setting the stage prior to explaining, this is what S2 does, I think is a, is another big category. And then ultimately, when someone throws out regionalization, I mean, we don't get in the weeds, I don't think we're just-
Say, "Look, it's, it's not, it's, it's long-term, and there's a lot of obstacles in the way," that's it. But, so, if, Dominic, you're, I think, the most fluent when it comes to the budget on the board, no offense to everyone else, so if you could take that-
That's what he's got to watch for.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and I can pull some of the things you've given me, Jeff, and I'll have that right. We can, that's why I thought I could jump in and help you get to, on some of these areas.
Okay, great. Can I ask you, are we still, with your vision, are we still looking to 2021 to do these moves, or are we going to maybe push it for another year?
In terms of the repurposing of Obama School, yes, that's still the plan for this coming September.
So, at a certain point, regardless of this town hall, I think it's, we need to get some, again, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but just from my opinion is, we should start to look at, okay, what are this, the cost savings? Like, what kind of cost savings can we put out there because of this closure? So-
Not closure, repurposing.
Repurposing, right, right, repurposing.
So, I, because I believe we have, we're getting close to the 7 o'clock hour, and we have Assemblymen, a hoteling is going to come in and swear our incumbents and, or newly re-elected. So, I just wanted to move forward with something. I am asking you for your opinion on a board retreat. So, I'm asking for a board retreat for the beginning of this year, where we would be able to sit down, meet with our superintendent, and talk about things that you would like to get more information of, open up the lines of communication, so that we're not stumbling through the midpoint of the year towards the, excuse me, the end of the year. So, if we could talk about what it is that we expect, what our expectations are, what her expectations, and forgive me for saying her, referring to her superintendent, what the superintendent's expectations are, if we could all be on the same page, I think that that would be helpful, because this is a crucial year for us, there are going to be a lot of decisions that we have to make. We are going to have the community asking us questions, and we need to be fully informed. So, if we have a board retreat, I'm looking at our next board meeting this month, if we're able, we may have Kathy facilitate, Ms. Mikeoff, or not, we could do it ourselves. But I just want us to have a meal, and to be able to sit back and have a real discussion, so that we're all on the same page. Okay, so, are we open to that?
Would we have it here, or just set a meal, so?
No, we're going to have it here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like dinner.
Okay.
No, no.
Oh, come on, my house, I'll make some pasta, it'd be great.
Well, I don't mind having milk. So, Mr. Hastings is going to look into that, and he's going to get back to me tomorrow, okay? I'm sorry? Okay. The other issue is, we have, you have a question?
No, no.
Okay. We have an issue of changing the board meeting from the fourth Thursday to the fourth Wednesday. Now, years ago, we used to meet on Wednesdays. So, are we open to changing the board meetings from Thursday to Wednesday? What is your availability?
You're right, there was-
Good.
So, can I, can I, so, this came about because I had a, I'm having a change in my, in my work schedule? Yeah, it's totally my fault, it's a solid, please.
Just change our line.
Please do, it just satisfies so much. No, I, my work schedule changed, and I can't make it on Thursday nights, so, but I also don't want to make it where, I want to make it as least, as less inconvenient as possible, so if we move it up one day to the fourth Wednesday, that'd be great.
You care for Joe, not my relationship?
I know we are, that's why I can't miss any meetings. So, and it, really, it's a weird work schedule, where it's from January to June that I just wouldn't be able to make it on Thursday nights, so.
I think the person who needs to change the meetings has to bring the food.
So, what we can do is, we can have a regular meeting at the end of the month, we can put on the agenda a, you know, a resolution to, and redo our calendar at that, at that point, probably a good idea.
Well, we have Resolution Number 14 on page A3 on our agenda. That reflects the fourth Thursday for most months, there's some months, as you recall, I believe October, November, December, where we have some board conferences and holidays, and I believe there's one other month where we move it up a little bit based on a holiday or another issue. And I would want to make one adjustment to this for our March meeting date. You can see there it has March 26th, which is the fourth Thursday. The state today released their election calendar and budget calendar for 2020, and we're required to adopt and submit our tentative budget, the tentative budget, not the final budget, on March 20th. So, rather than calling a special meeting, I would recommend that we push that to either the 19th, which is the Thursday, or the 18th, if we agree on the Wednesday, and take that under consideration, or we'd have to have a special meeting at that point to, to just have that topic discussed and adopted.
Okay.
I would agree with that, if the board go to Wednesdays and move the March meeting up.
Okay. Everybody in favor? I'm asking you to vote. Eric, are you okay with Wednesday?
No, we're agreeing with Wednesday now, but we're not going to have to figure out. That's moving a lot around.
Okay, so, put your mic on, Eric, because it's going to be here like this.
Are we agreeing to Wednesdays now, or are we considering it? I'm only asking because I had, I have to switch some things around myself, for it works, because I did a lot to switch it to Thursdays, so, I need to find out how I can do that, so.
So, right now-
Are we agreeing to Wednesdays now, or are we just agreeing to consider?
Right now, we're having the discussion about whether it would be convenient for most folks to move it from the Thursday to the Wednesday. The resolution itself that's on here recognizes Thursdays. We could adopt Thursdays and take it under advisement, and then at our meeting on the 23rd?
Yeah.
Or the 22nd, I'm not sure when your schedule changes.
Like, right away.
Right away, okay.
I just got, I just got news of this.
Is Tuesday out of question?
Well, does, everybody would have to check their calendars anyway, just to make sure, so, I, what Jeff says, I think we should just adopt it the way it is, and then adjust it the next meeting we have, if, if, if that's what we do.
Sure.
All right, so then, yeah, I said, I agree with what Jeff has suggested, that we just adopt Thursday for now, you know, and then come back on the 23rd, and you probably will not be here.
Yeah, I will, I will be here for that. Yeah, unfortunately, it starts, it, yeah, it's a really odd thing that's going on with that work, so.
Well, we have to check, because it also affects Eric.
Yeah, no, totally, whatever works best for everybody, so. I'm sorry, Eric.
No, I'm sorry.
So, we're going to adopt it as it is now, okay? And then we'll revisit it in January. That is all that I, that is all that I have for now, are there any other questions or concerns?
Could we?
Oh, I'm not presiding. Please, would you please take over, Mr. Hastings?
Sure, so I'd like to get a motion to adjourn for five minutes, so we can make sure everybody's on the same page.
Make a motion to adjourn the work session.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we'll take five. Okay, are we ready? Ladies and gentlemen. Could we all rise? Yes, could we all rise for the flag salute to start our meeting?
Great job.
Got to make two.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, on occasion, under oath, and visible, for the reasons of law.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6- In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, PL 1975, C231, S1, amended 2006, C70, S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press, the New Coaster, on January 4th, 2019 via email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the administration building bulletin board, district schools, the Asbury Park Municipal Building, the Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on January 4th, 2019. The Asbury Park School District's mission statement is to provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education, where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving, global society. At this point, I'd like to review the election results. Resolved that the Asbury Park Board of Education approves to have the following statement of the results of the November 5th, 2019 school election, made part of the organizational meeting minutes. Elected to three full-year, three-year full terms, Ms. Connie Breach with 921 votes, Mr. Dominic Lotaraca with 812 votes, Ms. Barbara Lizinski with 866 votes. At this point, I'd like to welcome Assemblyman Hoteling to our meeting, and he has graciously volunteered to do the oath of office for our three returning members.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of a member of a board of education that I will faithfully impartially justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability so help me God. I do solemnly swear that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1 and I am not disqualified for the office of a member of a board of education due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A :12 -1 so help me God.
Well, I would just like to congratulate the new members of the school board, wish you the best of luck, and the superintendent. You know, you have a tough job ahead of you, and the state of New Jersey has made that job a little bit tougher for you and your school board, but you have really embraced the changes that need to be done here, and I really admire what you're doing, and you know that Assemblyman, Assemblywoman Joanne Downey and myself and Senator Vingo Powell will be here for you. And there's somebody in Trenton who is very familiar with the Asbury Park school system as well. So we're all on your side here, I just want you to know that, and you can always count on us to be helpful to you, and I wish you the best of luck and I wish everybody a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. We appreciate your continued support.
I think at this time, we'd also like to thank Assemblyman's Chief of Staff, Mr. Tom Little, and our neighbor and friend Neptune Township Mayor, Mr. Robert Lee. Okay, I'd like to proceed with a roll call. Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraca? Ms. Lizinski? Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Etienne? Ms. Abes Anderson? Okay. We are going to proceed with the nomination of officers, beginning with the President, and then we'll move on to the Vice President. Before we start, I'd just like to remind the board of its policy that any member can place a member's name into nomination with no second required. We have to conduct it via a roll call vote, with a majority of board members voting in the affirmative. In the event no candidate receives a majority, we'll have to move to a second selection. So we'll take nominations, and then we'll close the nominations, and then we'll vote and order the nominations.
And that's pursuant to board policy 0152.
Thank you. Could we have nominations for the board president? Any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll take the vote. Mr. Lotaraca? Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Jones? Ms. Lizinski? Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Etienne? Ms. Abes Anderson? Motion carries. Congratulations. Madam President, I'll turn the meeting over to you for the election of our Vice President.
May I have a nomination for the Vice President, please?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Connie Breach for Vice President.
Okay, Mr. Hastings.
Are there, are there any other nominations? So then we'll close the nominations, then Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Breach? Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraca? Ms. Lizinski? Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Etienne? Ms. Abes Anderson? Motion carries.
So, okay, so it's my meeting. First of all, I want to thank all of you for voting for me. We've come a long way. We have gone from dysfunctional to functional to united. We are a team. And before I go any further, though, I just want to put a pause there, because I would be remiss, and I talk a lot sometimes and I forget some really important things. So I want to thank Ms. Sheila Etienne. She ran in 2016 with me and Mr. Saunders. And I didn't know her then, but she became a board member, she became a friend, and she has been an amazing Vice President. We have traveled together, and I have enjoyed you. She's an awesome mom, too. She's just an awesome person, and I just wanted to recognize her and thank you for your service. Thank you for working with me. And then I have something else to say, because I gotta brag on her, too. She, now, somebody just might be her. But it's, she has been.
I didn't take it, you did.
Oh, I gave it to him. Okay, thank you. Just give me a minute. Thank you. So, she is, Ms. Etienne is close to being certified as a board member, I believe it'll be this year. And she has been attending a lot of meetings up in Trenton, and so she has that, she received notice that she is going to be the alternate for the New Jersey School Board State Directors, am I correct? Board of Directors. So that's an awesome position for her, and so I just wanted to recognize you and thank you for all of your hard work, also as the chairperson of Buildings and Rounds. So just amazing, and I thank you, we thank you. So we have a lot of work that we have to do this year. As I spoke to you during the workshop session, we're going to have a board retreat so that we can open up the lines of communication and ask questions. There are going to be recommendations that are going to be made by our superintendent, and I'm sure you will have questions. I have spoken to our superintendent, and we're ready to rock and roll here, we're going to do the things that we need to do. But we all need to be on the same page. So, Mr. Hastings will get back in touch with us regarding that. Now, I also want to welcome our new Vice President, Ms. Connie Breach. So I'm not going to say anything, I'm going to allow her to introduce herself, but you know her, she's amazing as well, and as all of you are. So, Ms. Breach, please.
I just want to say thank you to the board members that elected me as Vice President. I actually served several years ago as Vice President, it's been a while, but we're all together, and I think it shows something that, you know, we're solid as far as, you know, where we're going and to continue where we're going, you know, and show the community what we want to do and how we're gonna do it, and just keep on going. And I think the statistics, the facts speak for themselves. Right?
Yes.
All right. Let's go.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over now to Mr. Hastings. We now have public participation. If you have anything that you would like to say, you may. So therefore, it is now closed, but we do, I do recognize you.
That's a rare occurrence.
Okay, there, public participation is closed.
All right, our next item is our annual review of the Code of Ethics. We've provided each board member and administrator with a copy of the board's Code of Ethics. There's a second page attached with a signature acknowledging receipt, so if you could please sign those and get them back to me at some point. And then we have Mr. Weiss from our Bush Law Group here to talk to us about ethics as it relates to the board members, and I'll turn it over to him. You should also have a copy of his presentation or some of his notes as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm going to try and be faster than I was last year. Last year, I was, I was prompted at about the 10-minute mark, I think, to finish up, so I'm gonna see if I can beat that this year. We all have read the Code of Ethics and the School Ethics Act. Here are the highlights. A board member cannot have an interest in any business organization or engage in any business that essentially conflicts with his or her ability to discharge their duties as a board member. We cannot use or attempt to use our official positions to secure any unwarranted privileges for ourselves, for others, for members of our immediate family. We cannot undertake any employment or service, whether or not we're compensated, that might reasonably be expected to prejudice our independence and judgment as a board member. And just so we're clear, when the School Ethics Commission looks at a perceived violation of the Ethics Act, they don't necessarily look to see whether or not the act in and of itself, whether it was done or not. The question that they ask a lot of times is, could this be perceived as a violation? So one does not even have to violate the act in order for there to be a violation, if that makes any sense. One cannot solicit or accept any gifts, contributions, et cetera, et cetera, that may have been offered for the purpose of influencing your position or your thoughts with regard to discharging your official duties as a board member. This particular provision applies to board members, immediate family members, and any business organizations that the board member may be associated with. With regard to campaign contributions, candidates for elected office, board members should not accept them if it's determined by the board member that it was made in an effort to influence your decision-making as a board member. As board members, we are here to make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children. We are to confine our action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, helping, again, to frame policies. Your job as board members is kind of the view from 30,000 feet up. You're here to set policy. The administration is here to execute your policies. So if you look at it that way, it kind of makes it easier to think of the role and function of a board member within the confines of the School Ethics Act. At the end of the day, you must recognize that the authority rests with the board, and you cannot make any promises of a personal nature or otherwise, or take any private action that may compromise the board. We don't have any issues, I don't think, with this board with regard to maintaining matters in strict confidence. This board has actually been very good about that. When we're in executive session, that is, those items and those issues that are discussed are not to leave the room. I do have some boards that aren't so good at that, but this board happens to be very good at that. We're going to refer all complaints to the chief school administrator and only take action at a public meeting in the event that the chief school, that action was not taken subsequent to your reporting to the chief school administrator. My notes also go on a little bit to address some forms of private action, specifically with regard to public statements by board members. There was recently, and I'll kind of go off of my notes here, you can read this at your leisure, but a lot of times we talk about, these days, social media, and there was a recent, thanks to this board, a recent ethics advisory opinion that addressed board members' statements in the public, specifically with regard to social media. While I don't think that that advisory opinion was made public by the School Ethics Commission, I nevertheless will tell you that, to the extent that you are making comments on social media, you are to have your disclaimer in there, and I can work with you or provide you with a disclaimer, Mr. Hastings can provide you with a disclaimer that I've essentially written. But it's important to note that just because you have the disclaimer on there, it does not act as a shield to then immunize you from a potential ethics violation. So you have to not only make sure that your disclaimer is there, but the sum and substance of your statement has to comport with the School Ethics Act. So in other words, you can't say, you know, so-and-so is a jerk, and our schools are run like garbage, and, but, I'm saying this as my own, as a private individual, that may not necessarily immunize you from a school ethics violation. So at the end of the day, you're to use your best judgment, but also keep in the back of your mind that you are a public figure, and there is weight behind your words. And your words, while you may have, you know, Glass of Red on the couch and you're on your iPad, that could affect you in a negative way down the road. To the extent that anyone has any questions with regard to school ethics, I'm always available. I would ask that you go through the board president to get permission to speak with me, but I'm always there, very willing and able to try and answer any ethics question, School Ethics Act or Code of Ethics question, and I try to give you very rapid responses to the extent that I can. Thank you for your continued confidence in me at your board retreat.
Any questions? Okay, you can change. Why don't we do a consent agenda?
Right, it's number, let, let's just say what the items are.
Have a motion for all items, A 213 to A 5 number 20, and then I'll take questions.
Move.
Second.
Questions?
Uh, let me offer a correction that we discussed, that was moved by Ms. Lisinski, seconded by Ms. Etienne. Please note on page A3, item 14, we are moving the March 26th meeting date to March 19th, so that we can abide by the, uh, submission date of the tentative budget for 2021. Uh, and then, as we discussed earlier, uh, we'll readdress this, uh, calendar at our meeting on the 23rd, to potentially move the meetings from the 4th Thursday to the 4th Wednesday. Uh, with that being said, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yes, I do have a question, uh, Mr. Hastings, please. Mr. Um, Pinkney, in regards to Wednesday, I was told that it's not a conflict for you.
No, I can do, I can do Wednesdays, I'll work it.
So, with that being said, what is the Board's pleasure as far as moving the meetings from Thursday to Wednesday?
What are we, I'm just going to check, why don't we just do it, uh, the 23rd, we can, uh, we can change the calendar, just so everybody checks, just to make sure. Just, just, so you said Tuesdays now?
No, the dates you'll see on Resolution Number 14 are for Thursdays. Uh, the recommendation, and still under discussion, is moving those back one day to Wednesdays. We are, however, moving March 26th to March 19th.
So then, the, the March 19th would be March 18th, if we decide that?
If we decide to, to the Wednesdays.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're going to take, we're going to address this now, because, uh, on the 23rd, Mr. Grillo is unavailable. Am I correct?
Correct.
So if we can move it to the 22nd, he would be in attendance. And seeing that it's not a problem for you, Mr. Pinkney, and any other board member? Oh, is, is it for you, Ms.? Would you prefer to wait? Or you? You want to wait? Okay, so, never mind. We're going to keep it to the 23rd, I'm sorry, Mr. Grillo.
I'm sorry. Just to record and show that, that I will be available for that, but I, I don't want to hold up anything.
Is there, is there a conflict on the 22nd?
Um, Ms. Etienne needs to check her calendar. So we'll just keep the board meeting scheduled for the 23rd, and then we'll revisit it then. This changing to Wednesday. Say, okay.
My Catholic guilt is starting to act out. My Catholic guilt is starting to act out.
So anyway, let's move on now, I want to get out of here. Oh, just don't put me on camera. Okay, so let's move on, please.
So we have a motion, the motion, uh, is for all items, A 213 to A 520. On item 14, we, only change we're making is March 26th to March 18th at this point, and we'll address that, um, at the next meeting. I'm sorry, the 19th, I had already jumped again.
Mr. Hastings, before we do that, um, A 520 is motion to go on executive, do we have a need for that?
No, not that I'm aware. Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
I'm confused, what are we voting on right now? Are we voting on the Wednesday, Thursday thing, or are we voting on the consent agenda?
It's a consent agenda, and as relates to the dates, it's Thursday right now, and on the 23rd, which is two weeks or three weeks from now, we'll discuss the Wednesdays.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we're meeting on the 23rd.
Correct. Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you, motion's carried.
Just one thing, I own, I'm missing two, I'm missing, uh...
I got it.
May I have yours, Mr. Lotaraca, please? Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.